For the Village of Arena to order, it's Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. Denise, if you could do a roll call, please.
Kate.
Here.
Kathy.
Here.
Melissa.
Here.
Kristen.
Here.
Matthew.
Here.
Brittany.
Becca Reardon.
And the next item is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is to approve the January 7th, 2025 agenda. If I can get a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the January 7th, 2025 agenda.
And a second?
Second.
A motion from Kathy and a second from Kristen to approve the January 7th, 2025 agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the next item on our agenda is consent agenda.
Can I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A second. So I have a motion from Melissa and a second from Kathy to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is public comment. And just be aware, members of the village board, speakers and audience members must observe proper decorum. Any statements made during the meeting or during the public hearing by the village officials, employees or members of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, village employee or a member of the general public. And it is two minutes, public comment. Paul Pisina.
Good evening. I see the preliminary drainage improvement feasibility study green color. That's not totally a bad thing, but I would suggest to the board that to look for business in the, in Arena, I would talk to the landowners on the south side of 14th. They are having people look at their land that's in the township. And they also are having people look at their land that is in the village. There was some work done, you know, as far as hooking them up to water, who I'm talking about. And as far as putting money towards that or putting money towards the feasibility study, your return on investment by putting money over there is going to get you a lot quicker return than over here. You could probably get a building or two on the tax roll within a year, maybe a little over a year, if you looked down the south side of 14th, which then in turn would help you with the feasibility study on Pine Road. And thank you for listening and not even acknowledging me. Appreciate that.
Right, next item on our agenda is Zach Adams from MSA, update on projects, wellhouse number two.
Alrighty, so not, or not a huge update for this board meeting. We did a final inspection with the DNR today for both the wellhouse and the sewer project. Basically just going through, they have a checklist they have to do. So it was just an onsite, quick little meeting, just making sure we're getting through all the tasks, getting through all the final closeout documents and everything. So basically, the only thing left for wellhouse two is just finalize some AIS certifications. We have all the minimalist items, so those items that were made of iron and steel, but weren't made in America altogether. We're pretty much at 95% of the AIS certs, whereas we need one supplier to finish that process. So once that's done, I'm hoping that's this week, based on my talks with the contractor this morning, we'll send it off to the DNR. They didn't have any issues with the sewer project for AIS certs. And I know both of those contractors have been working together on these documents. So a lot of them are the same, so I don't anticipate to have any issues. So then the last remaining stuff for the wellhouse will be doing a change order in payout, similar to what we did for the sewer contract our last month. And then just some final closeout documents. So nothing too crazy there. Sewer project, once again, we did that walkthrough today. That was kind of the last remaining item as far as the, before we close out the loan for the sewer project. DNR, Tyler Zettel, he did not have any issues, just pretty much, like I said, it's more formality this walkthrough, it's just making sure that the village, or Rich in this case, is happy with the project. Everything was done the way he likes to see, when we get these closeout documents done. And then I did get a letter from JI that will pass along, basically stating that they will come back in the spring to do warranty work. I know what we like to do is hold some retainage back in the contractors and ensure that they get it done, just to kind of hold that money over them. Fortunately with these DNR contracts, we're not allowed to do that because once we finalize the final payout, they'll disperse the funds and we have to pay it all out in full. So it's nice to at least have this letter to fall back on while they're under contract anyway to do warranty work. It's just kind of more so reinforcing the fact that they are willing to come back in the spring to tackle any warranty items. The DNR funding section is pretty similar to what it has been, it's just kind of talking about the closeout process. And then just the village is encouraged to confer with elders as far as how you can potentially use the remaining loan funds you have for both projects, potentially purchase some further equipment. That was one of the items that Tyler touched on today in the walkthrough, is that the village can spend funds as long as the DNR accepts it, although I've talked about in the past. It's just confirm with elders the applicability of the funding source that that can come from at home.
I did contact elders and they just basically asked to get something written from DNR that states that they will cover whatever you choose to do, just to make sure that you're covering your bases.
Say, Denise and I talked after the last meeting and she was concerned about the fact that these projects should be funded through the TIF, that the TIF may not fund any extra purchases outside of the projects while they're still covered. Like Denise said, she did talk with elders and as long as the DNR is okay with funding it, doesn't sound like it's going to be an issue. So that's for her. I'll talk, I know Rich and I have talked about a couple of items so far. We'll just kind of draft up a list and pass it on to Tyler to see what Tyler's willing to spend and that I can get something written from Tyler just stating these other things will fund, that type of stuff. Once again, it's the villages, it's up to the villages to decide if they want to use the loan to spend. I mean, you're still technically spending the money, but the nice thing about the loan is that you can get the principal forgiveness, so the DNR will help pay up towards it. But it's just understanding that it's going to be on a loan. So you could either just take the remaining budget that you have and use it to pay off some loans so your principal's lower, or be able to purchase some larger ticket items that you may not be able to budget for every year because you can pay them out slower at a low, very low interest rate. Alright, I'll get to the preliminary drainage study last, just because I have an action item for that. But the next, let's see, one, two, three, three projects, or like I said, just potential projects that we can help out with. I know we touched on the sanitary sewer lining project and MSA put in the ITA for clean water funding for that. It's another section of line, similar to what we've done in the past. Talked about Oak Street is a potential project and then just helping out PESA ratings they're due this year. And then the last thing I had on there was GAS updates. So I know last February, I believe it was, the village approved a contract with MSA to do some GAS updates through last year and this year. As we got later in last year, it was, our GAS team was made aware that ESRI, which is the platform that runs the GAS program, is going to be transitioning. Basically, there are map services from one software to another. They're very similar, just you have to transfer it. So instead of making those updates and spending any money, we opted to wait to know more about it. And so now, our GAS, what I attached in there is a scope of services on what needs to be done and some cost estimates. So it's nothing to talk about now. I, I just got this today, so I thought at least pass it on, just so you guys can read through it. I'm going to meet with our GAS people to kind of understand it better and see what exactly the village needs. Some of the stuff on there, I don't think we need to spend, or the village needs to spend money on, because stormwater stuff, there's very little stormwater system in the village. I don't know if they necessarily need to be spending money on any updates with the stormwater stuff because there's very little of it, but I just want to touch base with GAS people just to see what their recommendation is before I bring it as an action item to the board. I know the village did budget for some GAS stuff, but it's not ended up to cover what our staff has in here. So that's why I want to have a better understanding before I come in board with this. Is any questions before I proceed? I'm more than happy to answer any questions after the fact, as you're reading through that document. Most likely you'll bring it up at following meetings as I learn more of myself. Alrighty, the last thing I had on here was the preliminary drainage improvement feasibility study. So we talked about last meeting, we opted to wait for this fiscal year to provide this contract for the services. So like we touched on the past, it's just be a very, trying to spend as least amount of money as we can to come up with a recommendation on how feasible it is potentially solve the stormwater issues the village is seeing in the northwest portion of the village. So we looked at, we had a very late meeting with our stormwater team, just kind of discussing some options and kind of giving their initial look at it. We looked at some county Leader data to determine elevations in that area, to see what's going on. We touched on that there is indeed a valley that kind of runs from the river along that area where it's just low lying, you see Kathy's yard with all the rainwater. So we had looked, are looking at potentially two different options, either piping into the drainage, the, Corvention your drainage ditch, or potentially piping it north all the way to the river. So that's what this feasibility study would look into, basically trying to look at county Leader data to see what our elevations are and to see if we could do anything gravity fed or if it had to be more so like a pump system type of thing. Also looking at if we do connect to the drainage ditch, what regulations are in place because it's Corvention years, what they would like to see. So just contacting them to determine the feasibility of that. So just kind of laying the grassroots to have a starting point for anything further. But like I said, our stormwater, I was just emphasized, I'm trying to spend as little as we could on this initial aspect, just to gauge initial input and see if it's an option. And then also see like how big of an area it could potentially impact with this. But, so that's what the contracts are for, if the village is interested. And as Paul said, this does not have to be now type of thing. If you don't want to, if you want to wait a little bit, or you'd be more likely to go, or you can go through with it if you want now, it's up to the village, but.
Did we put, we did put a certain amount of relief in the budget, 25,000?
Yes, we did.
Discussion?
I, I guess I would wonder why this drainage feasibility study wasn't brought to public works for the committee to discuss? Because this was something that, that we previously discussed. And the point of committees is to have discussion on these things before it comes to the board.
Usually when it comes to engineering, attorneys, those types of things, I just bring them straight to the board because obviously we have to pay more per hourly for them to come to the committee meeting and then let's stay for the board meeting. So the village pays for that and then they have to just repeat everything twice. So that's why I just usually bring it to the board.
I, I understand, but it just, I, I guess the point of committees, I would just say, does, to me, that it makes more sense for it to go through committee for them to discuss it first than it does to just bring it to the board and circumvent committees. The other point of discussion I wanted to bring up in this is that, oh, page, page seven, under project understanding, it, it states here that groundwater elevation in the area is relatively high and standing waters, present in public and private properties during extended periods of wet weather. This conversation has gone on, whether it's stormwater or groundwater. This is essentially stating that it's groundwater and you're not going to change the water table. So I don't know why we would spend money on a project that is a groundwater issue when we can't fix the level of the groundwater.
And I would say to that, groundwater is always there, we're not always flooded. It is only when we get substantial amounts of storms and rain and that increases the level and it hangs around forever because there are no substantial drainage from that whole area and the blocks because in the past, ditches and culverts, we didn't have the same issues and we no longer have ditches and culverts and we have issues. So it's kind of different in the sense of groundwater is always there, yes, but when you have rain and everything else and big snowmelt, it brings that level way up and there's no way to drain off quickly like everywhere else in town can quickly drain off.
And I, I understand that, but this has been something that's been discussed multiple times over 10 years. And if it's groundwater, and even if you have rain, it's still groundwater because there's nowhere for it to go because the groundwater level is so high. Trying to divert it to a different area where the groundwater is still high isn't going to change much.
So I have a question, Zach. So yes, groundwater, but the feasibility study would try to determine what's the best way of trying to get it to flow away?
Yeah, I'd be looking at, try, the, there are kind of two separate entities to look at, surface water versus groundwater, and they're both going to be interesting cases. I mean, with groundwater, there's a lot more work that needs to be put in to determine how you can get removed. Like our stormwater team lead was telling us that typically when it comes to groundwater stuff, they have to have someone on the ground monitoring groundwater levels throughout the year to determine highs and lows, what it's actually like during the dry period versus wet period type of stuff. And you can go super expensive with it, or there's a huge range that goes into that. I think this initial look at was trying to determine more so the surface water look because the groundwater is so much more in depth, also taking into account for groundwater, obviously. I mean, you're having periods of rain, like we saw, I think, when we first started pumping for the sewer project, groundwater was only four feet deep. When it came to June, when we had that heavy lane, heavy rain, it was like a couple inches below the ground. And they were trying to do the restoration, you could stick your shovel in the groundwater. So, but see, I know one of the preliminary issues we looked at was that the drainage ditch already has standing water in it most of the year. So that was kind of a issue with it already has standing water. We're not sure we're going to be able to get proper drainage to that. Same with going to the north, obviously it gets higher before it gets lower as you go up Willow. But, so we had to look at probably piping that versus like an open ditch if you went to the west type of thing. So at this point, like I said, we haven't done too much to look into it. Kind of thing is just try to scratch at it first to see, but we'll know more as far as the groundwater implications, if we ever did something later on, that's, it's definitely a beast to tackle.
And I don't think anyone expects that it's going to be constantly dry. It's just that we shouldn't have to sit there in surface water for six months versus everything else dries out in one. And so it just takes so much of value down. It's also a health issue. I mean, that standing water isn't doing anybody any good and as far as mosquitoes and everything else and what they carry and also, so we know that it's not going to solve everything. But yeah, there is water in that ditch here, but it's not that high that you couldn't come in with another pipe and it'd still be moving. So it's not an expectation that you're going to be dry. So it's just, ditches and culverts and retention ponds and detention ponds and everything are in every other area because of water issues. They were taken out of that area and never replaced, never updated, never corrected. So that's all that area is asking for the board to do is to replace what's been taken away so that we can have some movement of water out of the area.
Is it also, I know you've talked to other property owners in the area. Is this something that they would be willing to pay for a special assessment?
Well, as far as I understood, it was looking at a special assessment and yeah, they're all in favor of that.
I know my boss did get a call, I think there's a house on Herman Street that's listed for sale right now. My boss did get a call from someone looking at that house and was concerned about, apparently they had heard about flooding issues in the northern part of Arena. I was calling him to get his opinion on the matter.
Herman's actually at a high spot. I think we should do it for the landowners and families that live in that area and so that they can enjoy, you know, the property valuations and, and life just like everyone else in the village can. And I guess I'd just like to mention too, that these people are also property, or you know, property taxpayers. And especially if they're willing to do special assessments to try to alleviate the problems. To me, it makes it more attractive, I guess I'll say, to try to, for the village to try to help them. But that's just my opinion.
My, I would say my only concern with that is you can throw money at anything. It's, doesn't mean you're going to have a solution to the problem. And this, like I said, if this has been going on for as long as Kathy says it has, that as well as how many years ago when we had MSA look at the area and give us estimates on, on what the problem was then, and estimates on trying to mitigate it with no guarantees that it would work. I, I don't know why we would pay for another study to be done when nothing has changed.
Where is that previous study?
It would be somewhere in the village's records.
Talking with my boss, he remembers that, that was Kathy that did that. That was looking more at localized kind of containment, like by property more so, with like French drains and stuff, not much, anything really larger scale. I don't know, I, he doesn't remember too much. It has been a decent time since I was looked at, but he just remembers it being more localized and something like connecting onto a ditch or a river kind of thing.
Would French drains really work in this situation?
You'd have, I mean, French drains work if they have an outlet. Like you see at the village park, there's a French drain there, but once it gets clogged or there's nothing there, the water just builds back up. That was, that was kind of the issue that Kathy was running into is finding a spot to connect to those for insurance too. So you're just kind of sending the water to try to push it down gradient, there's only so far down you can go with that.
And that's why I looked into the, eh, French drain and stuff that moves it.
And I guess part of this study would be looking at real estate acquisition potentials as well as, I was going to say, there's something else, they have real estate acquisition for something like that. We'd probably be more so looking at like township right-of-way acquisition, pump the lot on Pine Road instead of through the farm field, but potentially look at going through the farm field too. I know we'll definitely recommend a easement for that for maintenance reasons.
And what did the property owner think about the going through the field?
They're open to it going closer to the homes and stuff and into the ditch at that end.
I, I, just, just to caveat or question, not that I don't trust the conversations that people have with village residents, but especially in a situation like that, I would hope if this report gets, or if this survey gets approved, that we would have something in writing from property owner. That way, we know for sure, not just hearsay.
Yeah, it'd have to be a document.
Or that's just not written in here, so.
No, it'd have to be a document that they would have to sign. And we'd also need something that they could see that as a plan to go ahead, so. Any other comments, questions, discussion?
I just have a little to say, I guess. Um, I also spoke with one of my friends that live in the area over there and she had mentioned about this as well, and I don't think she'd have any issue signing for some survey and stuff, so.
Does anybody want to make a comment, or I mean a motion, or is there more comments, discussion?
Well, I make a motion that we move forward with the MSA professional services agreement for approximately $6,900 to get two feasible alternatives that we can look at.
Do you want to have a second?
I have a second.
So I have a motion from Kathy and a second from Melissa to approve the $6,900 feasibility study for the groundwater issue in that portion of Arena. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Alright.
That is all I had. Is there any other last minute questions? We'll add that just like all our, most of our contracts, this is a time expense contract. So you only get billed for what we do.
Up to the $6,900?
I believe so, not to exceed yet.
Yep. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. My next item was president's report, then I don't have anything there. Maintenance, monthly maintenance report.
We had inside of the, well, the DNR requested some stuff to be touched up before December 31st. He was in there, Sam Blaster painted it, a couple of warm base, because it only had to get to 45 for the epoxy to seal. So he did do that, got it to where Nathan was happy with it, but he will finish the rest of the work when he comes back to do the drawdown and interior work. We replaced some street signs from some of the ones that were really bad, you couldn't hardly see. We burnt the brush pile down here, we're still working on some of it, and we ordered new bag targets for the archery park. And Friday night, we had a problem in our sewer that is not here, but it's, we had some, 5:30 I got a call, we had backup over on Herman Street that was affecting him. He went over there, pulled a manhole cover that was six foot of water, one of the manholes went downstream, pulled a manhole eight foot of water in that one, went to the next one downstream, not a drop, it was at the park. At six, I think it was 6:30 at night, I didn't know what to do, I called out Reno, sort of in a panic, like what do I do, because I got waters getting close to the sewer line in the basements. He has his own jetter, he got, we got in contact with one of his guys. Nathan came down, jettled it out. He said it's the wash, the dude, they're called dude wipe, wash or flushables, but they're non-flushable, they do not, they're not supposed to be flushed. And he said that's what the majority of the first slug that came down, I was at the other end watching it, like seeing the water level was going down, and it was. And that's what he come up, he said, Lone Ox had problems with it, Spring Green has problems with it, and now we're seeing problems with it, not saying that other ones. So I'm hoping that nothing affects our lift station because we only have one lift station. And if, they say that they can raise havoc with your pumps, so I'm hoping for warmer weather here next, probably hoping April, I get to April, we'll pull, pull one pump at a time, make sure that there's nothing in there plugging up, because that'd be about a year that they've been in. And that'd be the year with maintenance on it.
Anything else?
Hopefully we don't have any more of those calls. Hopefully we don't have any more of those calls.
Hopefully. Questions for Rich or do you read anyone?
Just thank you for taking care of that, Rich.
And, but I do have one resident that called me and wanted to express his absolute appreciation for our public works personnel, you guys do a great job. So I wanted to hear.
Is there something because of what they're using that we're letting them know that they shouldn't be flushing?
I, I have no way of telling everybody you can't, you can't use it, we do not. I believe we do not have an ordinance against it. We do have an ordinance against it.
Every, every third year we hand out the flyer.
Okay.
In your utility bill.
So when did the last?
People probably just throw it away, they probably don't even read it.
You know, when did the last one go up?
Uh, '22, I believe.
So this year we'll send out another one and maybe we should make sure that they understand that we've been having problems so that they may pay attention to it.
But if they don't read it, it's.
Yeah.
Word of mouth, I guess is the best way, but nobody talks to anybody anymore. Nobody talks to their neighbors anymore.
And we should probably.
I mean, it's just in general.
On the website and Facebook.
I mean, you can, it would be nice to have everybody know all at once, but it's hard to pass that out.
Yeah, put it on the website, put it on Facebook.
Put it over here for the lecture day, you can hang it on a wall.
There you go.
Because everybody that comes in, that's half the village have come in.
You cited one specific type or brand of wipes, but it's really all the flushable wipes.
It's baby wipes too.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Even if it says it's flushable, it shouldn't be flushable.
They say right on, I, I have to admit, my son uses them, but they're, he does not flush them because he knows better. And he uses the dude wipes, which I brought over, they're like this, they say flushable on. But in the back, there's a little sign right, little thing right here, do not flush them. Not acceptable for private, like your laterals. I have Whip down here, he's looked, our, our pump that I use, he said it's about, half of his calls are for personal lateral being plugged and he said that's what they are, is the wipes.
What about the ones that do say flushable, biodegradable, blah, 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 are those okay?
No, if you flip the package over, it says right in there, do not flush.
Really, the only thing that should be used is toilet paper that, I mean, to be flushed.
Basically what you flush is, the rule of thumb is if you eat it, you can flush it, but except for toilet paper. If you don't eat it, don't flush it.
With that exception.
Well, yeah, toilet paper, I don't want you to eat that.
Yeah. So, okay. Ready to move on? Clerk treasure report.
So these disconnect notices with these two 24-hour door hangers, do we throw water in winter? It's going to have water heater.
So it says zero disconnect, zero DPA, so that means that they came through or, all right, good.
Reminder, everybody to license their dogs, it's that time of year.
Any other comments, discussion on clerk, clerk treasure report? All right, so moving on, there is nothing under old business, new business, as Ellers, the 2025 sewer rate study disclosure.
This was recommended by a Italian country when they came to discuss with Dean Iowa. We should discuss with Ellers to do that, so this is their proposal.
And this funding would come out of, or the sewer.
We need to do this. Make a motion to do the Ellers 2025 sewer rate study for $9,500.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion from Melissa, a second from Matthew to approve the Ellers 2025 sewer rate study for $9,500. Again, that would come out of the sewer, sewer budget. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to committees. We did not have a public works committee meeting. And so the next item is finance, technology and licensing. If you want to take that, Melissa.
For the copier maintenance agreements, there wasn't an error. When they came up with the fees, they thought the, the minimum was $40 per month. So last month we approved to spend like $40 per month and per, throughout our executive account assistant, it needs to be $50 per month is the minimum. So we already had a discussion on the need for maintenance and the recommendation from committee was to accept the proposal and the change to $50 per month. So I'll make a motion to accept the $50 a month copier maintenance agreement.
Do I have a second? I'll second. So I have a motion from Melissa and a second from Kathy to accept the garden flush, or company copper maintenance agreement for $50 a month. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
And the next thing we had was we received our website support contract and there's an option to continue doing what we're doing and keep our current website framework and platform and not make any changes. So that would just renew our contract for three years at the same price. Or we could modify our website and change it and there would be additional costs. The recommendation from committee is to extend the current contract at $1,000 a month, or $1,000 a year for three years. So I will make a motion to extend the current contract at $1,000 a year for three years.
Do I have a second? I second it.
Before we vote, can we have some, just quick discussion?
Sure.
Forgive me if I'm misremembering this, but wasn't part of the potential grant that we were applying for that we would be switching over or doing something with the website? Making it more secure or something like that?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, is that just emails that would be changing?
I do have the website on a .gov web basis, so already, but it's just basically emails and.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion from Melissa, a second from Kathy to approve the revised website support contract for $1,000 a year for the next three years. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the next item is Dean Iowa, it was canceled due to weather conditions. So our next meeting is going to be in January. Emergency response, there wasn't anything there. And the next item is fire EMS. And Melissa, if you wouldn't mind filling us in on that.
Yes, our patch, so truck repairs on engine one and brush truck one are completed. We are working on a generator repair, but they need schematics to fully diagnose the issue. Paul and some other people are looking into getting those. So Paul and Steve will come and we'll try to get the schematics so that we can diagnose better the issue that's going on there. A big item to note there is the current generator is 22 years old. Cost bringing is approximately $15,000. The next item is our ambulance has to have the word ambulance on the sides in the back of the truck. It wasn't compliant, so there's work being done to correct that. Mueller Graphics is doing it. We approved spending up to $2,780 for replacing cables on all seven doors and springs in the ambulance bay. So ongoing maintenance. We're going to continue, we had a contract to use CAD system. We're going to move forward with that because we already spent the money. Steve had a great presentation on how that works and a discussion for all of us. So it's kind of on the scene footage, there's some benefits to that. One of them, he highlighted was that if somebody needed to leave like the ambulance and go off to a farther away area to respond to a scene, it does help other responders locate that person and kind of connects them all the time. Also like more privacy stuff because you can scan stuff in and maybe not have everything so much discussed over radio for people that were trying to help. So there are definitely some benefits, but they're going to evaluate that going forward and whether we'll continue. EMS staffing, Steve reported that we currently have four people that are going to begin the January class. One person completed EMT two, need to do their testing. One person's completed the EMT one portion and they're working with her, encouraging her to go to EMT two class. And it says Tucker Ziegler completed EMT one. So they're working on getting him credentialed. So still need people to volunteer and get additional help for our EMS service. So under new business, fire department gun raffle, they do that every year for Super Bowl Sunday. So encouraging people to support that. They noted that fire call volume has been up the last, for the last four or six weeks. When we had that ice storm, there was a dangerous accident on 14, we're tier two service highway. So it wasn't salted. So I'm really grateful that our volunteers still go out because that was a risky situation. We're still hoping to get more applicants. There hasn't been any yet for our EMS full-time position. So the discussion we had was we are also going to look at hiring two part-time versus just the full-time posting. We purchased our stair chair, but it didn't come with a power cord. So before we can place that in service, we have to get that. And then we had a closed session, so that's pretty much it.
Any other discussion? All right, so there was no meeting for personnel, public safety or plant commission, informational. There is an item there from Boardman Clark and that people can read. It's their, you know, their monthly newsletter. So I guess we are at the point of adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second. So.
Kathy, one.
So I have a motion from Melissa, a second from Kathy to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and it is 7:43.
Thank you, Brittany. I hope everyone's.
Thanks, well too.
Thanks, Rachel. Bye.
Bye.